Everybody stand if you would in place and we'll have some strange views of ourselves. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Board members, what is your pleasure with the consent agenda?
I make a motion we accept the agenda as presented.
Suzanne second moves and Kathy seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, I see you. And the next board of selective meeting will be on Thursday, November 5th at 5:30 at the Firehouse. I think I prefer in person myself. I have no other comments. Does anybody on the board have a comment?
I do not.
Okay, then this is item number one, a conversation with members of the Patent Free Library Board of Trustees and Ms. Donjer, the librarian.
If I may, I'm the president of the board, so I thought I could start by introducing who's here from the board.
I love that.
Okay, thank you very much, and I want to thank the select board for having us here. We welcome the opportunity to talk about the library all the time. It's one of our favorite subjects. And we raise it as often and as much as possible. So again, thank you very much and thank, like to thank Christine Poland for setting this up on a Zoom meeting. It really helps many of us who have medical issues we have to deal with. Let me start by introducing the participants who are here from the, from the board, starting out with Winita Wilson Hennessy, who's from West Bath and one of our West Bath board members. Lea Zartarian, who's also from West Bath and one of our West Bath members. And Mary Ellen Kazemeyer, who is, works on the board, a former president and now runs the finance committee very ably. Being somebody who doesn't add very well, it's good to have somebody on the finance committee that does. And Leslie Dollinger, who's our librarian. And then myself, Richard Kessler, and who's, this is my first term, first year term as president of the library and, and look forward to talking with all of you and answering any questions you might have. I know we've provided already a great deal of information about how the library works and what we do and West Bath's role in it. So maybe it might be, first, let me see if anybody from the board wants to make any comment and then we could just have questions, your questions, if that's suitable for you, Ms. Hennessy.
That's, works for me just fine.
So maybe ask my colleagues if they have anything they'd like to say before opening it up.
I guess I'm ready.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just ready to get going and, and see if we can provide additional information.
As a West Bath resident, I just would like to say, I just was, I'm stressing the importance of an affiliation of a municipality with a library. I think it sends a positive message and I would like to see that continue.
Just as a kind of background for all of you folks who work with a library, the reason that we asked for this conversation was that over the last several years, there have been a number of questions raised and continue to have been raised about our affiliation as a town, the Patent Free Library. And as we were discussing the budget this past year, one of our budget advisory committee members made motion to approve the, the budget request with the stipulation that the Board of Selectmen would ask for this meeting. There, and I've been serving on the board for five years and these questions have come up and they don't seem to have been given an answer that satisfies people at least for very long. So I think one of the questions that has been recurrent has been about the number of people from West Bath who actually use the library as opposed to perhaps the number of cardholders. There's also been a question about whether or not the library's lists are current. And we have, over the past several years, asked to, if we could perhaps review those lists of memberships. And we were told that that was not possible. Sure why the Board of Selectmen would not be privy to that information just as a matter of transparency, so that we can assure that people of West Bath that the lists were accurate. So I guess that's a long way of asking the question.
I mean, I can, Leslie can answer specifically. Obviously, we know how many people from West Bath have cards and we provided that for you. We don't necessarily know how many people use the library from West Bath because it's probably more than the cardholders, since we have a number of other facilities that people use, like the Wi-Fi. They come in, they use the history room, et cetera, et cetera. On the issue of privacy, Leslie can be more specific about it, but in my experience, people, there are privacy rules, like people get very nervous if they feel like other people have access to information, but Leslie can give you any specifics on it, Leslie.
We do have a privacy policy that the board has approved and it is standard policy. No libraries do not share the information of who their cardholders are. That, that is, that is in the ALA Bill of Rights and we do not share names and will not with anybody.
So can you share then in that?
I agree with that wholeheartedly. We have to think about other countries. I've lived in other countries and we do need to think about, you know, I think we're a little naive sometimes here in the US and we think about, oh, you know, what's there to hide? But actually, it, it, we could get to some point where there is something to hide. So I do think in order to have a, an informed public, they should have private, you know, be able to access the library without having to reveal their identity, other than that someone proves that they are eligible to use the services. So I, I agree with that. I endorse that.
So how do you, how do you, I guess, ensure accuracy of renewal status with that? And, and maybe explain your renewal process?
Sure. So what we do, the renewal happens, it doesn't happen automatically. What happens, a renewal, we set cards to expire every 12 months. And the reason we do that is, is we want to make sure we have the most up-to-date information for patrons, especially things like email and telephone, because that's how we communicate when holds come in and there. So we want to make sure that we have good communication with our patrons. So they expire every 12 months, rolling depending on when that, the patron comes in. And they must come in in person and verify their information, show ID. Or if, if they get, in a case where they can't borrow an ebook because they've, their card is expired, they might call over the phone or send them, but it's only, the expiration dates are changed manually by staff at that time. So it is not done automatically.
I will testify to the effectiveness of that because I've had, I've had to renew my library card and I probably have to renew it now, to be frank with you.
Carly, do you have your hand up?
Carly muted.
I'm sorry, I do not have my hand up.
Okay. Thank you. So am I to understand that it is ALA policy suggestion? Of course, no local library would have to follow the ALA policy if they chose not to. But it's a recommendation of the American Library Association that lists of library subscribers not be made available to anyone ever, under any circumstance.
Unless it's a court order and even then, there have been law, there have been, you know, news articles and things about, you know, libraries not giving information. We, we follow strict policy. We do not share information at all.
And what base?
I have a question for David.
I will tell you this, in order for a resident to get a card, they have to show ID. So we have accurate information on, for West Bath residents because they must show a card, as any resident or non-resident, to get, to get a card with us, so.
So based upon some of the numbers that you shared with me in supplemental emails following your initial message, it looks like we've dropped 100 folks year over year prior to COVID. Is that accurate?
Yes, so in the, you're talking about?
Cardholders.
So yes, what I've given you, the statistics show that, and that's from our Minerva system, we run reports, so that is correct.
And that's prior to COVID.
Prior to COVID. And that is, that, we have seen that trend in borrowing across the country. We're not unique. West Bath is not unique in that. In, yeah, we're seeing that debt trend. It doesn't mean that people aren't using the library. We, there are many ways that patrons are using the library. I know Suzanne, you had sent me an email about how did, how many West Bath residents are using the library. And there are many things that we do not, can, cannot track. For example, when patrons walk in the door, for whatever reason, we don't card them, we don't have them sign in. When patrons attend programs, when people, patrons use our Wi-Fi, when people use the history room or have a reference question, we don't track what town people are coming from. So there are, there are many measures besides borrowing that we cannot track and provide.
Wouldn't you want to though? I mean, if you've got people coming that are not part of the, I'll say approved membership or have active membership, wouldn't you want to know who's not paying and using your service?
Well, there's certain things, I mean, we would have to card everybody that comes in the door. And if they don't have a card, we would have to gather information. We, I mean, it would, there are lots of things that I'd like to be able to track, but with our capacity, things like Wi-Fi usage cannot be tracked because that.
Not asking for you to track what they're using, but if, if someone walks through the door and wants to use the service, they should be a card-holding individual to do that.
That's, that's not how we operate. We don't deny, and we don't deny people coming in the library if they don't have a card or not a resident of the town.
David, you're, you're muted, so unmute, now's your question. Can't hear you.
How about now?
Yep.
Wonderful. I guess my question is, a couple of things. For many years, we were told the bylaws did this and did this and couldn't allow the endowment to be used. Then later on, we were told the endowment could be used to fund the fundraising position. At being told the bylaws could not be changed. How did that happen? It just seems fine, the bylaws can be changed one way and not another. The next question is, this does not ever seem to be a request from the town of West Bath. This is in a sense a tax. You will pay us $33,000, $34,000, $36,000, whatever, a year. If you don't agree, you can't use the library. That is not a request, that is a demand. And that is not the way to do it with the town of West Bath. You don't demand we pay this. You ask for requests. We fund several agencies, nonprofit, good agencies throughout the town. Every, every year, the town never balks at finding these worthwhile agencies. They don't demand a number, they ask for it. They don't say, if you join or you're out. They say, we request your help. They don't say all or nothing. Why does a library say all or nothing?
Well, and did it tag?
That's been a big issue for years. You demand this.
Well, not even a demand, it's, you came in this year.
I want the library to answer, thank you.
Mary Ellen, you want to take that one?
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to address that as the chair of the finance committee. So two questions here, where I can't speak to the past. The first time I met with you, I think, was four years ago, when I was the chair of the finance committee. The bylaws, which are available, by the way, on the website, you can look at them yourself. The bylaws do not govern how much can be taken from the endowment. Instead, I, well, I'm very sorry to hear that, but they, they do not, and as far as I know, they never have. What the bylaws do it, well, let me, let me say where the endowment withdrawal policy comes from. That's something that is decided by the Board of Trustees. The current decision by the Board of Trustees is that on an annual basis, we will take 5% for our normal operating costs. And on the issue of how much the municipalities pay, that's the part that is in the bylaws. And that started in, I believe, the 1960s. Some of people, townspeople, I know the primary mover and shaker was a guy from Woolwich, my town, who wanted to have the people in the town surrounding Bath to have the same access, free access to the library that people in Bath had. So he worked with the trustees and the other towns to come up with a way of doing that. They decided back then in the 60s that the fair way to do it was to have a concept of supporting municipalities. And that's what, West Bath is a supporting municipality, Woolwich currently, or Rousick in Georgetown. And I'm not sure what year this started, but the decision was finally made that the fairest way to allocate costs among all of the supporting municipalities would be the per capita formula. And that's, that has been worked into the bylaws. So currently, every municipality pays the same amount per capita in order to become a supporting municipality and thereby every citizen in their town has free access to the library. So when we come to the towns on an annual basis, you're right, we're not asking for money in the same way, you know, united way, or somebody might be asking for money. We're asking for, if you want to call it a tax, I guess you could call it a tax, since I suppose it comes from your property taxes that you collect. We are providing a service to the citizens of West Bath in exchange for payment on a per capita calculated basis that is the same for all of the municipalities. And one point I want to make, because I know this has been a sore point for some people, is the concept that the city of Bath somehow sets how much we charge. And that's, that's simply not true.
When did that end?
I, as far as I know, it never, never was.
Well, for many years, we have been told, up until this year, as a member of the budget committee, we have been told, whatever the city of Bath agrees to per capita, that's, well, no. You may not know this, but I'm telling you, for many years, we were told, whatever the city of Bath agrees to, that's what the other towns will pay.
And that.
It may not have been in the bylaws, it may not have been in writing, but that's what I was told at many budget meetings. Whatever the city of Bath agrees to.
I can only speak, I can only speak to the last seven years. But I can certainly find out, I could talk to Roger Hurd and speak to the last 20 years.
We have been told that.
Winita?
No, well, and that's absolutely.
From the West Bath Finance Committee in the late 80s and into the 90s, having been the recorder for Patent Free Library and then six years as a trustee, and I'm not sure how long it's incorporated, but those three roles. What David is saying is absolutely valid. So you can reach back and look elsewhere, but I am on the record predating Leslie. That is absolutely valid. I remember factually one year that the city of Bath, I pay taxes in Bath as well as in West Bath, could not make the prorata. And they rolled back and the rest of our towns rolled back to stay in sync with the city of Bath. So based on my history, what David is saying is absolutely correct many, many years, over decades.
In the past, certainly not the case.
Correct. Save you researching it, there are two people in this meeting who remember it with clarity.
Well, here we are. We are, for the, I can tell you that for the last seven years, not only does Bath not tell us what to charge, they're not even involved in the process. We develop the budget internally, we decide what we want the per capita to be and we roll it out and ask the towns and Bath isn't even the first.
But we have been told in the town of West Bath budget meetings that this is based on what the city of Bath agrees to during the last seven years.
Absolutely, absolutely not.
But we have been told that.
Not by me.
Absolutely not.
And I, I've been to.
Well, I, can you say, can, can you speak to that in a, in a not passive voice and say, who in the world would have told you that?
The people.
I don't have, I don't have recollection of who said that, but I do know that it has been, that understanding has been part of the discussion for as long as I've been on the board. Now, I, it may not accurately reflect current conditions. But what I, what I have been saying for the last couple of years myself is that there is a lack of communication, a lack of accurate information, a backlog of misunderstanding. And if the relationship with West Bath, with the Patent Free Library is going to continue, it, those, those problems really need to be solved.
What is?
I'm not, I'm not.
Because there is a, there is a genuine misunderstanding and misapprehension and, and a sense from many people in West Bath that we're being dictated to rather than requested from. And that doesn't sit well with people.
Well, in addition to that, Madeline.
Hold on, Suzanne, let me finish my question, my, my thought. Because of the backlog of misunderstanding, there are a number of people who are proposing alternative ways of providing public library services. And, and I'm personally reluctant to see that happen. But I, so this, this lack of understanding between the town and the library needs to be solved.
Well, and, and you know, we, you came into our finance budget request and at the time, now granted, you did reduce your request, it was a 9% increase when the cost of living is a fraction of that. And you come back and say, well, it's in our bylaws and, you know, I feel like you're kind of using your bylaws as an escape to just say, here it is, have a good day. You can shake your head, but that was in our meeting and, and the initial request.
No one, no one told you, no one told you that the bylaws had anything to do with 9%?
No, you came in and said, we asked for things, you go, our bylaws state that we can't take, it's an all or nothing transaction. I said, if we sent you a check for $25,000, what would you do? And I was told, return it. And so there was, it's, it's an all or nothing scenario. When I look at some of the other environments, when, you know, Curtis Memorial Library has a $75 non-resident fee and that covers the entire household. And West Bath, you know, has the luxury of having school choice. I'm a fan of school choice and I'm a fan of library choice, to be frankly honest. It gives people the opportunity to pursue where they would like to go for school, for the library. And it, and, you know, I have, I am concerned that we are paying for, for, right now, it's 465 residents down from 568 year over year, and again, that's pre-COVID. It appears that only 20% of our residents are utilizing a benefit that 80% of the other residents are paying for, and that seems a little off-kilter to me.
Well, again, we don't know how many people are actually achieving benefits from the library since we don't track other than borrowing physical materials. But we are, we are subject to the will of the townspeople and that's in every town. So if your townspeople decide that this is not a bargain that they want to make, then we're going to have to live with that.
But you're, it's an all or nothing transaction. There's, there's no room.
Well.
You, you have a one fee, it's, it's seven, now 70 from 60. There's no K to five or an age group or a senior. And, you know, you automatically enroll the kindergartners and first graders when they come in from the school. For, you know, and, and that didn't happen this year with COVID. So I'm going to guess our numbers are probably half of what they are year, year over year.
Well, we spent, yeah, we spent a number, we spent a number of years in various kind of ad hoc committees trying to figure out what really would be a good municipal funding formula. Is there a formula that people would find more palatable than the per capita? And the problem is that we, we have with this is that, you know, we have these four towns plus the city. And the per capita was arrived upon as being the fairest to everybody. And, you know, we haven't come up with a formula that's fair to everybody. And if we were to say, yeah, we'll take your $25,000 instead of the $34,000, what can I then say to the citizens of my town, Woolwich, or to Rousick or to Georgetown? It's a race to the bottom then, that's the problem.
But if I look, if, if, if we're at 465 potential card users, and that was last year, I'm going to guess we're going to drop well below 400, you know, and probably into the threes. And then I say, okay, now it's $70 a person, well, that's 21 grand versus the 34,000 that you wanted. That is a savings to the town, you know, and that's presuming that we're going to fund 100% of the card. So, you know, we, as a town, we just need to look at the whole community and not a 20% allocation that represents the whole community, because the whole community is not using the library.
Well, the, the, the library is available, the library is available for everybody. We are, we'd love to do more to market the benefits of the library to people. We think, we think a town is weaker if it doesn't have a municipal library. Certainly when I was moving from the, in, from inland down here, I wanted to live in a town that had a municipal library.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't use it. I'm not sure that we should fund it.
Suzanne, Mary Lee has had her hand up for ages now and she must be tired. So I'm going to ask her to, to say what she has to say and then Leah, you're up.
Thank you. I, I, I understand this is a very hot topic. Um, I have several things that I've heard you talk about that I would like to address very quickly. One, I would ask that if you have not read the report that the library. One, I would ask that if you have not read the report that the library committee produced. After a great deal of research, to please do that. I can't say that it answers all of your questions. I do not know if it answers that question about who said what, as far as, you know, um. How the, uh, you know, if, that if Bath, the numbers that everybody else pays is established because of what Bath pays. I don't remember hearing that last year. I could be mistaken. I mean, we all know I have a hearing impairment, but. I could be mistaken by that, but I have heard that and I've heard, you know, this is pretty common in a lot of communities. I mean, we all have it. We have what the, what the folks say is word and come to find out sometimes it isn't. So. I do think that should be addressed, Madeline. You know, if that is not, if, if our amount is not based on what Bath pays. Good, let's get that out there. Let's just disestablish that. Let's get right to the bottom of that. I would like to say, I find that it's disappointing that only four hundred and sixty five members of our community. Use the library. Shame on us, shame on us. We should, we're free and we should be an informed citizenry. And maybe the town of West Bath has not done what they can do to reach out to the citizens. Yes, most of us are on the internet. Yes, we're informed, but you know what? There are a lot of very busy mothers and fathers and people that don't have computers. That don't have internet right here in our community. And I go back again to, this is not library related, of course. But if we had a little newsletter that went to every DM mailbox in the town of West Bath, this is a place where we could. Get out the word that we do have the library, not just of those, those of us that can afford to have. Computers and iPads and laptops and all that other frivolous. So shame on us. Maybe we're not getting the word out to our citizens in the way that we should. My next point is, okay, so the town, so Patent Free Library want. Wanted to raise nine percent what they're charging over last year. You know, I think the town of West Bath, and I haven't gone back to look at my numbers, but I'm pretty sure. We. Had to allocate more, at least nine percent to pay our citizens that are, are, are employees. And some of that is not something we can control. It's state mandated, there's life insurance, health insurance. Um, all kinds of things that we have to, that we, the town of West Bath have to deal with. So. Nine percent may be, just because it's not transparent, doesn't mean it isn't a valid number. Uh, I realize that the cost of living didn't go up nine percent. I, I get that, but there may be other fees that the, the library's burden was. So. You know, maybe a little bit of transparency there would help convince some people that this is the best value for the citizens. Um, I have a five percent number, but I don't know what that is, so I apologize, but those are my three points. The nine percent, you know, it may not just be that they threw a dart at the wall and kid a number. Surely they're, they're dictated, oh, the five percent. I will tell you this. And every one of you that has a 401K or investments or trust funds. We do not, is not advised to withdraw more than five percent. Yeah, you can get away with ten percent if you're like, you know, ninety. But the rest of us, we do have to be very frugal and I appreciate that the library is being frugal. And I will end with saying, if there was a more financially conservative way. For us to have library services which don't just include checking out a book. I know that that library is a safe place for middle school kids to go. After school, no one's checking their card to see if they can be there, but you know what? As a child who did not have a safe place. I appreciate that it's there and I know, and let's let our children know in the town of West Bath. That it is a safe place. If you need a place to go after school, it's there. So shame on us. Let's get the word out there and makes, see if it makes a difference. No, it may not be worth thirty four thousand dollars, but it may.
Leah, you're, you're next. And Leslie, were you trying to get the word in wedge wise?
Okay, Leslie and then, and then Richard. Go ahead, Leah.
Okay, I'll. There, there's a reason about that nine percent increase and I'm gonna defer to Mary Ellen and Leslie to, to speak to that further. It was not a dart against the wall, it was, it was very clear, related to Monday openings. But I think the important thing I wanted to respond to Suzanne about in terms of. Municipal services and what we're paying for, if you start looking at who uses what. I find that very concerning because we're supporting a pretty expensive school and there are many of us who don't have children. But I absolutely value education and feel my tax dollars are well worth that school. We have roads that need to be improved. Sabino just went through a big, I don't go down that way necessarily very often. But I'm very glad that they're taking care of, of, that West Bath, the town of West Bath is taking care of our roads. So I would be careful going down that slope. And then last, lastly, I would say, as a trustee. I, I agree with Mary Ellen, I, um, Merrily, I would like to see more, I'd like to see our relationship strengthen. I'd like to know what the library can do for West Bath and vice versa and see. Uh, the roadblock to me is, is, is concerning, so I'd like to work towards improving that.
Thanks, Leah.
Uh, Leslie.
Oh, and I was just gonna say, I was responding to also the nine percent increase. That was a very specific reason to ex- extend our hours, to have Monday hours. Um, and so that was the, and it was, we did in our letter when we send our funding request. We did indicate why specifically we were asking for that increase.
Uh, Richard.
A, a lot of good statements and I, I really appreciate everyone's input. You know, improving communication has always been important. And, um, and I've been thinking of ways that we can try to do that. It's been really hard with COVID through a wrench in all our efforts. I will say, I mean, the, uh, I can't speak for the history of. What towns have been assessed in the past, uh, as far as I know in my experience on the board, which. Isn't that many years, it's only six years, is that, uh, it's been, uh. Uh, tied to the per capita. Last year was a little bit different actually because we got a special, uh, supplement from the town. From the city of Bath to, uh, thirty six thousand to, I think it was thirty six thousand.
Twenty five.
Twenty five thousand to be open on Mondays, which we had had to have closed in the past for, for financial reasons. So actually, the Bath paid more than anybody else last year. And what we've been trying to do, what we were trying to do pre-COVID, of course, was to expand our hours, keep it open. And, uh, and expand the services. And I, I will say, under COVID, our services have expanded in many ways with. People who have downloadable audible books, with movie services. We have programs for kids, we have books on the bus that the West Bath students benefit from, we have teenage programs. And to me, and this gets back to a little bit to the earlier point that, um. Uh, why do we let everybody into the library? Library really is a community service. It, we exist to try to make everybody's lives better. We exist to try to help kids to become good citizens. We exist so senior citizens have opportunities that they may not have and are able to get out of their homes. And, uh, have a, a better experience, uh, and I'm afraid I'm a senior citizen now. Um, but, uh. You know, and we have been talking a lot and trying to find ways that we can serve our communities. Better, especially our rural areas, people who, who may be housebound, who can't get out of the, get out as well as they can. And, um, I welcome the suggestion to, for everybody in every community to try to get their. Uh, towns to communicate with their citizens about what we have and what we're offering people in the library, because that's why we exist. We don't exist to be a private club. We exist to serve everybody as well as we can. And so we're open to any suggestion about how to do that better. And, uh, you know, especially with this problem with COVID, we've been. Trying to figure out ways that we can do better jobs of helping people, helping the kids. And, uh, uh, you know, we're open now partially. It's really tricky, we're going into the winter months. Everyone is nervous, our staffs are nervous about having too many people in the library. I mean, we, we, we cannot wait to get back to the point where we're wide open. Anybody can come in for as long as they want and do what they want while they're there. And especially, I, I think the point of a safe place for the kids is important. Cause we know that there are a lot of families who are suffering, particularly with the problems of COVID. And a safe place for the kids is what we all want for everyone. So, thank you very much and.
Partial hours, um, since COVID and many of the other surrounding libraries are, um, fully functional right now. Even have Sunday hours, so I'm a little concerned on why we're paying the full fee.
Leslie can speak to that, but I don't know, I don't know any library in the state that is, uh.
The Curtis.
Maybe there's one out there.
Not open full. Curtis is open three days a week with the other two being curbside. They are not fully open. It is on their website. That information is, is available. There are very few libraries, I talk to library directors, I'm on listservs, that information is available. Libraries are not open. There are some that are, most of them still have limited hours. They're allowing, we, we are given guidelines from the main state library about what, what. We should and shouldn't be doing and what is safe for our patrons, what is safe for the people of West Bath. What is safe for our staff and all of the community. We are trying to keep everybody safe and doing the best we can. We offer many more virtual services than we have in the past. That takes resources, that takes staff time. There are a lot of things that we're doing virtually that we were not doing before, such as programming, because we can't have gatherings. Um, so we, we are right in line with what other libraries are doing and it takes a lot of staff time and resources to do these things. Um, we are open, we are open six days a week now, we are, we are, we maybe are, are down six hours from before. Um, but we, you know, we are open six days a week. There is only a couple libraries in the whole state of Maine that are open on Sundays. Curtis Library is one. I live in Topsom, they have never been open Sundays. That is, it is, that is not. If, if you look at, I, I can, I can see reports of library hours and that's. You know, we, we are open as much or more than most and we are doing the absolute best we can. We have staff that are coming in every day and making sacrifices to expose themselves to potential virus. Um, to serve our patrons.
David, you, you've been hanging there for a long time.
Well, just a couple things. I have backed the library for many, many years and still do. It's a worthwhile service and it's needed. Many of our residents. Who don't have kids in school and those type of things, use this, elderly residents use it all the time. The last few years, communication has not been good. Uh, the example is this, uh, position for a funding, uh, grant persons to find funding for, more funding for the library. When they first came to the budget committee, they said six months to see if it works out. The next year they said, oh no, it's a year, year and a half to find out if this works out. Just tell us upfront what you have in mind. Uh, we're told the bylaws don't allow more than five percent. They went totally took extra money out of the endowment to fund this position. Well, don't tell us those things, tell us straightforward what you're doing. The library is worthwhile and I will back it, but the communication in the last few years is not very good. So let's improve that. Let's see what the town gets with benefits. Let's see if the residents get the benefits. It's not just about money. Every program the town funds does not pay off in dollars and bills. It pays off in what the residents get from that service. So let's see if we can find a way to get better communication. And talk to us in honestly, how you feel and what's going on in the library. Don't just say, uh, bylaws don't allow this, tell us what's going on. It is worthwhile, the library is worthwhile, but we need more information. I will wholeheartedly agree that compared to fifteen, twenty years ago. The library would tell us nothing about their budget. They would give us no information at all. That is much better now, but there needs to be more information and more communication.
You've been, you've been quiet unusually so. Do you, do you wanna weigh in?
Well, I, I'm just listening and, and one of the things, I don't know, COVID has really thrown a wrench in everything. But I'll be honest with you, I don't know all the services that the library provides. I have not been to the library since I was a teenager. I think there has to be some way to get out to the public what you do provide. Um, what services are available and, um, not quite sure how we do that. I don't know if you meet with ours. With the local schools on a regular basis and let them know what's available, but somehow, um. We need to get this out there and I just need to agree with David. I've heard so many different things about the library and this and that, and then tonight we're hearing that's not true, that's not true. Um, I think we start to distrust and, and don't want to fund. When we feel like we're being lied to and I'm not saying that that was done intentionally on purpose. I just think, you know, open, honest communication both ways. Um, needs to happen to, to repair this relationship.
I'd like to weigh in on a couple of things. I'm Jim Atherton, I'm kind of new to this debate. Uh, but I'm a big supporter of the library. I work with friends of the, of the library. Uh, first point is, uh, there was a corporator meeting last week and Leslie gave a little slideshow. It talked about how these guys at the library have accommodated and changed things during this period of COVID. And it was really impressive. I mean, they've done a marvelous job of. Trying to figure out how to get services to people in this, in this, in this time. The second thing is, I'm really distressed to hear about this lack of information or this perceived. Lack of communication between West Bath and the library. I think we need to work on that. It's, if it's, it's the, the, the size of the problem that I'm hearing from you, from you folks.
Juanita. You're muted, Juanita.
Sorry, my phone had rung and I did mute it. Absolutely support Patent Free Library. Also respect Curtis Memorial, Topsom, Tottenham Library. I want to say two things. One. Right now, I, I don't have a patent free library book out. Do I have books that I'm reading? Yes. I, I can't get in, I respect COVID, I can't get in. I really think we need to be cautious in approaching. That anyone who uses a different library, I have a family member who has taken on a membership in Fulton Library, does their book clubs. Is not using libraries, uh, is behind the times. I, I really think we don't want to jump. To that conclusion. The other point is, all schools, I have volunteered in every one day a week. When my youngest was at West Bath Elementary School. And I substitute taught simply because they were hard pressed and I was available as a self-employed person. So, the summary of this is, I do agree with Suzanne wholeheartedly. And I think it's a point that we can't lose focus of. Choice does matter. West Bath's ability to truly choose what high school. Or middle school, or private school our kids are gonna go to. Has been dearly bought and out of a lawsuit with the city of Bath. We were RSU one because we were saying, hey, it's West Bath, we're bringing in athletes. We're bringing in the top academics in many cases. And we want a voice and we ended up in a very unfavorable financial position. That cost us dearly. That is a fact. Choice, once we were removed from RSU one and Suzanne and I, we don't even know each other. I think we've seen each other once before, but we share a real estate background. I have tracked the value increases of the sale of homes in West Bath. Now that brokers can legitimately say there is choice. And the families who are talking to me and to probably Suzanne and others who are saying. I do want a choice. I'm not people who are living in caves, don't raid, don't value a library. Don't value a safe space for students. That is not the case. And I think that we all need to be very clear minded about that. We do not have a library in West Bath. I don't think we're weak at Farah. We don't have a post office. And I don't think we're weak at Farah as a community. We choose the lifestyle that we pay our taxes to live. And I do want to say, Suzanne, it was difficult to say what you said, I agree with it completely. I fully support Patent Free. But West Bath is not a weak community. We are not an illiterate community. We are not a community that doesn't care about our kids. But communication does need to improve. And this is someone who was volunteered to the library too.
I'm not against the library at all. Both of my parents were in public education. My mom taught kindergarten for 25 years. My dad started as a teacher and became a superintendent. I chose to send my son to St. John's and didn't use even the school and the allocation from West Bath. That was my choice. And, and, and now he's in Brunswick High School. Because again, that's our choice. And I think choice has helped West Bath become a very attractive community. We, Juanita, I'm glad we are saying the same thing. It's, you know, I believe it makes West Bath a very structured and attractive environment for people to want to come here. I think our towns run very well. I think there's things, I just want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for the community as a whole. And that's really what I was elected to do. And that's how I view that.
We'll also buy the bulk of our library cards and patent free, whether it is townwide paid for out of people's pockets. That's not ever going to change.
Mary Ellen, you have a comment?
Yeah, I know your time is precious, so I'll make this quick. On the subject of increasing communications, one thing that might help is, I think you may be aware that although most of the positions on the Board of Trustees are elective through the body of the corporators, we also have some selected positions. And one of them is, every year, we have a town representative, someone who represents the four towns. And we rotate that through the towns. This upcoming year is the year for West Bath. So you, at the select board generally, was who chooses the person that you want to represent the towns at the trustee level. This person serves for a year, is a full voting member of the Board of Trustees. And we invite you to designate somebody at your earliest opportunity. They can start as soon as they want.
No, thank you. I'd like to close this discussion by reiterating the point that many of us have made, that more information needs to be forthcoming. We need a great deal more transparency and a sense of partnership rather than imposition go a long way. My suggestion would be, the next time you think about changing the bylaws, that each of the rural towns be given a place on the Board of Trustees. And I think that might go a long way to correcting that sense that one size doesn't fit all. And, and we really, I don't see people being against libraries here, but I see people being concerned about a lack of transparency and a sense of being taken advantage of. Whether or not that's justified, I can't say, but people's feelings are feelings. And this is a very emotional discussion. Yes, Richard?
Well, let me just say, thank you very much. I really appreciate hearing all your comments. And certainly we'll take them back and, and we'll discuss them. And I certainly hope that all the information we provided you and the responses to the questions will be reviewed by the select board. And if there's any additional information you need that you ask us, and we'll certainly look forward to our future meetings with you. I mean, you know, I, I take your points. It's, I used to serve on, on my select board for 14 years. So I know the challenges that you all face. It's ultimately the position of the select board to make a decision. And we'll certainly respect the decision you make. And thank you very much for all of your time.
Thank you. Pardon my phone. I'd like to, in this part of the meeting, I would like very much for us to find a way to continue this conversation before the budget meeting. I say your head nodding very much, Leah.
Yeah. Let's, let's, let's you and I talk and figure out a way to make this happen.
Leslie, can you, can you pull where we are year-to-date for 2020 numbers?
No, I can, but I don't have that information now. I mean, it's always the number of cardholders.
Yeah. What you pulled for me for the showing that cardholders could have used? I'd love to know where we stand in 2020.
Where you stand in 20, yeah, I can provide that information. Yeah.
Perfect, thanks. You have it broken down by demographics also?
I know, I'm going to look at that too. I got your email this afternoon asking me to break down for the, the one year. And I will do that as well. Okay, so you want the 2020?
Year-to-date and then you can know what the demographics are perhaps this year plus two back.
Thank you, everybody. Let me tell you that I'm happy to share my demographics. I currently have a book out on Cloud Library. It's free. It's through the Patent Free Library. I've always had a library card. I was stationed in six different locations when I was in the Navy, in addition to working at the Library of Congress. And as soon as I bought my home here in West Bath, I went right over and joined that library. So I appreciate it very much.
I would just like to add one just thing, and I agree. I think communication is, is critical. And I, I just hope that if there are questions that come up or you're not sure of something that you, because we can't intuit that. You've got to ask us. We, I, you know, if there are things you want to know, please reach out and ask. And I will be happy to answer it. I, I try to be as transparent as possible. I'm happy to share any information. I love talking about the library. So please, I mean, reach out to us as well.
Okay, thank you. We're going to continue on with business item number two. Much appreciated for everybody's contributions. Yeah, Jim, did you have one more thing? You're just waving goodbye. Thanks.
I was just waving goodbye.
All right. Good to have you with us. Thank you. Okay, I need to find where to put my glasses. The next item of business is the election warrant. We have that in our packets online. Then we, so if we approve having an election on November 3rd, we should, all three of us go to the town office and sign this warrant. But we should officially approve the, the warrant. So you have that in your packet. We have a motion to approve the warrant?
The warrant for the election.
I move to approve the warrant for the election.
Second, Kathy? All right. Any further discussion? Should we have an election on the 3rd of November?
Probably not, but
Yes, please let's just
But it's required by law, so we'll do it. All in favor, please raise your hand.
David, I can hardly see you. I think you need to turn a light on.
I'm hiding the dark. Sun went down.
I swear, I don't think they saw you raising your hand.
I didn't.
Well, you're not entitled to vote for this one, David. All right. So the, the next item on my list is the election warrant, the town administrators report. Somewhere in here, we have the letter which I left off my notes here. So let's deal with the revision of the letter. Any comments about that? Did I improve it or make it worse?
Hold on, I'm actually pulling it up right now. I printed out everything but that. I apologize. So, Madeline, that, that first sentence is, that isn't flowing for me. This is hard to do in this format. I suggest we put this off until Thursday.
We're not meeting on the 29th?
On the 7th. We're meeting on the 7th?
On the 5th.
A 5th, whatever that Thursday is. I'm having a hard time. I just, I actually didn't, I didn't get, I printed everything but this. And I want to put some time into this. Is that okay?
Sure. I'm personally in no particular hurry.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Shall we move on?
Yep.
Okay. Christine, you have observations to make for your report?
I only have one item tonight. Brian Doughty has arrived to start his work on the town hall. And the trim was delivered today. It's exactly what we were expecting. So I'm sure he'll get started on that tomorrow. Pretty excited about it.
That was out back?
Yes.
I saw that today.
Yeah. Nice, white, Isaac trim.
They go pile of something.
Yeah, so that's what we have to report tonight.
Hallelujah. Five years of discussion. Future agenda items. The letter. I would like to point out that business item number one on the next meeting, following the election, will be the election of the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. So perhaps the signatories on that letter will be different.
That's a good point.
At least the order. Anything else on the future agenda?
We should talk about what we want to do for our library representative.
Okey-dokey?
And where was the road committee? We were going to put that on some future agenda.
Yes, that's on the November 5th agenda.
Okay.
So that also talks about the water line in Wing Farm?
Correct. I don't think we've had anybody contact us about being on the road committee yet. But that doesn't mean, well, we just had the one person.
I was going to say, that one person made it very clear to me that he has brought it to your attention and does not want us to forget him.
Yeah, but since that time, we, I don't think we've received any yet. But, you know, it's still early. We have a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
All right.
And we should also talk about the board procedures at some point.
Looks like, looks like we should bring snacks. That's a, that's a long agenda.
Yeah. This doesn't have to be on the 5th, but we should talk about it soon.
Yeah.
In case provisions are necessary.
Yeah, I think we should put that one off.
But even if we put it on there as near the end and if we don't have time, move to move it to the next meeting. That way we don't lose track of it.
Yeah, I, I like that idea, Kathy, that
Yeah, that would be fine.
We at least all, we at least all ought to have given it a healthy read-through. Because this is what we'll be agreeing to is how we're going to work with each other. So I think that's important. Do we have any other?
Not for me.
I hear silence. I see blank faces.
A long day.
And so I, I believe that is no other. Public comment? Merrily, David? You're on public tonight?
All set.
Okay.
You can only hear David, you can't see him.
Voice in the dark.
I do have a question, David. I see Joyce and Debbie fixing dinner in the background. What's for supper? And can I come?
Due to COVID restrictions, you may not come.
Merrily, don't be shocked. We are, we are, we are here at the farm doing, doing COVID restrictions. We are very careful.
In the front stoop for.
Well, that, that's sort of been happened. But I, I'll go to the fridge and find something. Don't worry about me.
I'm only serving leftovers, Ellen. And I'm afraid they were delicious, but there aren't enough to go around.
All right, then.
I have a potato pie in the oven, waiting for me to dig into that.
That's, sounds really nice. Anyway, shall we adjourn?
We should.
Thanks, everybody.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for what all of you do for the town.
Bon appétit.
Indeed, you as well.
Good night.
Good night.